Heavenly Father, we thank you that your word is a lamp to our feet and a light to our path. Give us faith to receive the word, understanding to know what it means, and the will to put it into practice. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Today, we are studying Genesis chapters forty-five and forty-six. Genesis forty-five and forty-six. Joseph reveals his identity and reunites the family. Genesis forty-four ended with Judah's passionate appeal to Joseph for mercy for Benjamin in whose sack Joseph's cup was found. He did not offer any excuses, but revealed that he was unwilling to leave Benjamin as a slave in Egypt. He explained that their father had strongly objected to their bringing him to Egypt because he had already lost his brother and was afraid some harm might happen to him also. He added that he had personally guaranteed that he would bring Benjamin back. His plan, his plea for Joseph's mercy was for the sake of their father, who would die of grief if Benjamin was not allowed to go back with them. He offered to be Joseph's slave if only he could allow Benjamin to go free. Let us read the first four verses of chapter forty-five. Then Joseph could not restrain himself before all those who stood by him, and he cried out, "Make everyone go out from me." So no one stood with him while Joseph made himself known to his brothers. And he wept aloud, and the Egyptians and the house of Pharaoh heard it. Then Joseph said to his brothers, "I am Joseph. Does my father still live?" But his brothers could not answer him, for they were dismayed in his presence. And Joseph said to his brothers, "Please come near to me." So they came near, and he said, "I am Joseph, your brother whom you sold into Egypt. But now, do not therefore, do not be grieved or angry with yourselves, because you sold me here, for God sent me before you to preserve life." In this chapter, we shall read the moving account of Joseph's response to Judah's pathetic speech. It was indeed a moment of intense emotion. Joseph could not restrain himself any longer, so he made everyone in the room go out, leaving himself and his brothers as he revealed his identity to them. He wept so loud that the Egyptians and the house of Pharaoh heard it. "I am Joseph," he said to his brothers. "Is my father still alive?" But his brothers were too shocked and terrified to answer him. They were ever afraid to move near Joseph. Just he had to say to them, "Please, come near me. I am Joseph, your brother whom you sold to Egypt," he said to them as they moved near him. He must have spoken to them in Hebrew and not in Egyptian so as to assure them. Even then, they still could not believe their ears. Could this be true? They had sold him as a slave. They had imagined he would be dead by now, and to think that he was the one standing before them and speaking to them, that he was the highly respected Egyptian lord before whom they had bowed several times. Certainly, they would have remembered those dreams that Joseph had and related to them. They were now at his mercy. Would he revenge? How they had tried to make sure that these dreams didn't come true? So many things would have been going on through their minds, but Joseph's words to them must have put their minds at rest. He mentioned their past offense against him, but not with bitterness or resentment. Let's read verses five to eight. "But now, do not therefore be grieved or angry with yourselves, because you sold me here, for God sent me before you to preserve life." For these two years, the famine has been in the land, and there are still five years in which there will be neither plowing nor harvesting. "And God sent me before you to preserve a posterity for you in the earth and to save your lives by a great deliverance. So now, it was not you who sent me here, but God. And he has made me a father to Pharaoh and lord of all his house and a ruler throughout all the land of Egypt." Joseph's brothers had wanted to get rid of him, but God has used even their wicked action of selling him into slavery to fulfill his ultimate plan. He has sent Joseph ahead to preserve not only their family's lives, but also to save Egypt, to preserve the lives of many in the then-known world, and to prepare the way for the beginning of the nation of Israel. Our God is sovereign. Joseph concluded that his brothers were not the ones that sent him to Egypt, but God. "Do not be afraid or angry with yourselves," he said, "because you sold me here. It is not you who sent me here, but God. And he has made me a father, that is, an advisor to Pharaoh and lord of all his house and ruler of all the land of Egypt." God was just carrying out his plan, as revealed to Abraham that his descendants will live in a strange land. Genesis fifteen thirteen to sixteen. Genesis fifteen thirteen to sixteen, and I'm going to read. Then he, God, said to Abraham, "Know certainly that your descendants will be strangers in a land that is not theirs, and we serve them, and they will afflict them for hundred years; and also the nation whom they serve I will judge; I am sure they shall come out with great possessions. Now, as for you, you shall go to your father's in peace; you shall be buried at a great good old age." Why did Joseph not recount the pain they had caused him and seek revenge? Because Joseph had the right perspective about all that had happened to him. He knew that God was at the center of it all, all that he had experienced. He saw God's hand moving in his life. Now Jacob will have to come to Egypt with his descendants to fulfill what God told Abraham in Genesis fifteen thirteen to sixteen. God saved Jacob's family as part of his covenant promise to Abraham. Jacob and his twelve sons would be multiplied into the great nation of Israel as they continued to live in Egypt. Now let's read verses nine to twenty-four of chapter twenty-fourty-five. Verse nine. Hurry and go to my father and say to him, "Thus says your son Joseph. God has made me lord of all Egypt. Come down to me; do not tarry. You shall dwell in the land of Goshen, and you shall be near to me, you and your children, your children's children, your flocks and your herds, and all that you have. There I will provide for you, lest you and your household and all that you have come to poverty." For there are still five years of famine. "And behold, my eyes and the eyes of my brother Benjamin see that it is my mouth that speaks to you. So you shall tell my father of all my glory in Egypt and of all that you have seen. You shall hurry and bring my father down here." Then he fell on his brother Benjamin's neck and wept, and Benjamin wept on his neck. Moreover, he kissed all his brothers and wept over them, and after that, his brothers talked with him. Now the report of it was heard in Pharaoh's house, saying, "Joseph's brothers have come." So it pleased Pharaoh and his servants well. And Pharaoh said to Joseph, "Say to your brothers, 'Do this: load your animals and depart. Go to the land of Canaan; bring your father; brand your households; and come to me. I will give you the best of the land of Egypt, and we eat the fat of the land. Now, you are commanded, do this. Take us out of the land of Egypt for your little ones and your wives. Bring your father and come. Also, do not be concerned about your goods, for the best of all the land of Egypt is yours.'" Then the sons of Israel did so, and Joseph gave them carts according to the command of Pharaoh, and he gave them provisions for the journey. He gave to all of them, to each man, changes of garments; but to Benjamin he gave three hundred pieces of silver and five changes of garments. And he sent to his father these things, ten donkeys loaded with good things of Egypt, and ten female donkeys loaded with grain, bread, and food for his father, and for the journey. So he sent his brothers away, and they departed. He said to them, "See that you do not become troubled along the way." So Joseph told his brothers to go quickly to Canaan to bring his father to Egypt, to live close to him in Goshen. They were to tell him that he was to come with all he had, his children, his grandchildren, and his flocks and herds. He will protect them. He will provide for them, as the famine was still to go on for five more years. God had been good to him in giving him the position of a prime minister in Egypt, second only to Pharaoh. He kissed all his brothers and wept over them. They knew soon reached Pharaoh that Joseph's brothers had come. Pharaoh was happy to hear this, so were his officials. Joseph was doing such a marvelous work in Egypt to preserve lives, that Pharaoh was prepared to do anything for his family to make life comfortable for them. So Joseph sent his brothers back to his father with Pharaoh's blessings and many gifts, and gave them provisions for the journey. And as Pharaoh had commanded, give them carts loaded with grain and the good things that Egypt had to offer. He also gave them change of clothes. When they reached Canaan and told their father that Joseph was alive and was a ruler over all the land of Egypt, he was stunned and did not believe. But when he saw all the carts that Joseph had sent to bring him to Egypt and all the other gifts that Pharaoh had sent, his spirit revived. It was true after all. He could see his beloved Joseph, he could see his beloved son Joseph again, whom he had believed had died. Hope replaced despair and filled his heart as he declared, "Joseph, my son, is still alive. I will go and see him before I die." Oh, the mercy and grace of God! Those brothers did not deserve the favor and blessings they received. Because of their wickedness, Joseph was rejected, enslaved, and imprisoned. But although they had been cruel to him, he graciously forgave them. It is usual for us to want to hurt those who hurt us, but Joseph had the right perspective of what God did. "You sold me," he said to his brothers. "You sold me, but God sent me." What they meant for evil, God used it for good. Romans eight twenty-eight says, "And we know that all things work together for good for those who love God, those who are called according to his purpose." He told them not to be angry with themselves. Joseph is a good model for us of how to forgive. God can use our hurts and our pains to accomplish his good purpose for us. Jesus is a type of our Lord Jesus. Joseph is a type of our Lord Jesus Christ. On the cross, he pleaded for those who were crucifying him. He said, "Father, forgive them, for they do not know what they're doing." Luke twenty-three thirty-four. We need to learn to forgive. Ephesians four thirty-two. Ephesians four thirty-two says, "And be kind to one another, tender-hearted, forgiving one another, even as God in Christ forgave you." Jesus ended the parable of the forgiven servant in Matthew eighteen twenty-five, twenty-one to thirty-five, with the following words. "So my heavenly Father also will do to, if each of you do not forgive his brother, his trespasses." So I want us now to go to chapter forty-six. Now we read the rest of the chapter. "They went out of Egypt and came to the land of Canaan to Jacob their father. And they told him, Joseph is still alive and is governor over all the land of Egypt. And Jacob's heart stood still before he did not, because he did not believe them. But when they told him all the words which Joseph had said to them, and when they saw the carts which Joseph had sent to carry him, the spirit of Jacob their father revived. And Israel said, 'It is enough. Joseph, my son, is still alive. I will go and see him.'" Chapter forty-six. So Israel took his journey with all that he had and came to Beersheba and offered sacrifices to the god of his father Isaac. Then God spoke to Israel in visions in the night and said, "Jacob, Jacob!" And he said, "Here I am." So he said, "I am God, the God of your father. Do not fear to go down to Egypt, for I will make of you a great nation there. I will go down with you to Egypt, and I will surely bring you up again, and Joseph will put his hand on your eyes." Then Jacob arose from Beersheba, and the sons of Israel carried their father Jacob, their little ones and their wives, and the carts which Pharaoh had sent to carry him. So they took their livestock and their goods, which they had acquired in the land of Canaan, and went to Egypt. Jacob and all his descendants with him, his sons and his sons' sons, his daughters and his sons' daughters, and all his descendants, he brought with him to Egypt. Jacob, who is also known as Israel, set out on his journey from the promised land of Canaan to Egypt with all that he had. But he stopped at Beersheba, a place that was very important, not only to his grandfather Abraham and his father Isaac, but also to himself. At Beersheba, Abraham and Abimelek had made a covenant, and Abraham had planted a tamarisk tree in Beersheba and called on the name of the lord. Genesis twenty-one twenty-three to twenty-four. Genesis twenty-one twenty-two to thirty-four. Also, Abimelek had come to his father Isaac and made peace with him at Beersheba. Therefore, Isaac's servants had dug a well which he called Sheba. The name of the city was Beersheba. Genesis twenty-six twenty-six to thirty-two. Genesis twenty-six twenty-six to thirty-two. Now at Beersheba, before he left the promised land, Jacob offered sacrifices to God and worshipped him. God appeared to him at night. "Jacob, Jacob," he said. Note that the two names Israel and Jacob are used interchangeably. In verse three, God spoke to him. "I am God, the God of your father. Do not fear to go down to Egypt." God must have known that Jacob had some reservations about going to Egypt. God had promised to give Canaan to him and his descendants, and now he was on his way to Egypt, leaving the promised land behind. Was this God's will? He probably wondered. Moreover, his grandfather Abraham had gone down to Egypt without seeking the face of the Lord, and he had had an unpleasant experience there. Genesis twelve ten to twenty. Genesis twelve ten to twenty. Also, God had forbidden his father Isaac to go to Egypt when there was famine in the land. Jacob was probably afraid of what might happen to him and his family in Egypt. He would certainly need God's assurance. So God said to him, "Do not be afraid to go to Egypt, for I will make of you a great nation there. I will surely go down with you to Egypt, and I will bring you back again. Joseph will put his hands on your eyes," that is, when he will die. Jacob got all the assurance that he needed from God, so he and all his people went to Egypt with their livestock. In verses eight to twenty-seven, which we are now going to read now, verses eight to twenty-seven, we have the names of the descendants of Jacob, also known as Israel, who went with him to Egypt. The order of the sons of Jacob as given here is according to their mothers. In verses eight to fifteen, we have the sons of Lea along with their sons. They numbered thirty-three. In verses sixteen to eighteen, we have the names of the sons of Zeohah, Lea's maid, along with their sons. They numbered sixteen. In verses six nineteen to twenty-two, we have the names of the sons of Rachel along with their sons. They numbered fourteen. And in twenty-three to twenty-five, we have the sons of Bilhar, Rachel's maid, along with their children. They numbered seven. In verses twenty-five to twenty-seven, we read that all those who went to Egypt, who came from Jacob's body, were sixty-six. All the wives of Jacob's sons were not counted. If we add Jacob their father, Joseph and his two sons, who were already in Egypt, the total number would be seventy. So the total number of those who went, who came from Jacob as they went to Egypt, were seventy. That number was seventy. In verses twenty-eight to thirty-four, which we're going to read now, we read about how Jacob settles in Goshen. Chapter forty-six, verse twenty-eight. "Then he sent Judah before him to Joseph to point out before him the way to Goshen. And they came to the land of Goshen. So Joseph made ready his chariots and went up to Goshen to meet his father Israel. And he presented himself to him, and fell on his neck and wept on his neck a good while. And Israel said to Joseph, "Now let me die, since I have seen your face, because you are still alive." Then Joseph said to his brothers and to his father's household, "I will go up and tell Pharaoh and say to him, My brothers and those of my father's house, who were in the land of Canaan, have come to me. All the men are shepherds, for their occupation has been to feed livestock, and they have brought their flocks, their herds, and all they have. So it shall be when Pharaoh calls you and says, 'What is your occupation?' You will say, 'Your servants' occupation has been with livestock from our youth, even till now, both we and also our fathers, that you may dwell in the land of Goshen.'" Even till now, both we and also our fathers, that you may dwell in the land of Gushen. For every shepherd is an abomination to the Egyptian. As they entered Egypt, Jacob sent Judah ahead. To get the direction to Gushen. Later, Joseph went to Gushen to meet his father. In what was a tearful but happy reunion. Here was Jacob, seen face to face with his favorite son who had been presumed dead. And whom he had mourned for many years. Joseph fell on his neck and both of them wept for a long time. At last, Jacob said to Joseph. Now let me die, since I have seen your face, because you are still alive. Then Joseph told his brothers and his father. That he will go and tell Pharaoh about their arrival from the land of Canaan. He would also inform them that they were shepherds and had come with their flocks. He advised them that when Pharaoh asked them for their occupation. They should tell him that they had been shepherds all their life. So that it could allow them to live in the land of Gushen. For shepherds were an abomination to the Egyptians. Gushen was the best part of the land and provided excellent pasture for grazing. God was going to use this to separate his people from the Egyptians. So that they would not lose their identity as the people of God. So, after many years of separation between Joseph and his brothers. Caused by their jealousy and wickedness and sin against their brother. God worked mightily to bring about reconciliation between them and Joseph. And a happy reunion with their father. Only God can do that. Only he can restore what sin has destroyed. Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father. We know how difficult it can be for us to forgive those who have wronged us. And how easy it is to hold on to grudges. Thank you for what this study of Joseph has taught us tonight. He was able to forgive his brothers because he had the right perspective. Of what your greater plans for him were. Help us, Lord, to forgive others, because you have forgiven us through our Lord Jesus Christ. And help us also to trust that you, our Father. Are able to use whatever challenges we face in life for our good. Thank you, Lord. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Join us next time when we shall be studying Genesis forty-seven and forty-eight. Good night.